Ready to go, so welcome everyone to the planning board meeting for April twenty six, twenty twenty three. Medical room phone, who's here?
Mark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here.
Amy Glassmeyer here.
Evan Hein here.
Senator Hobson here.
Chris Flex here.
Okay, joined by our acting town planner, Lauren Lynn. Angela Kiso is out there taking minutes. Angela, could you just type in a question to let us know if we have any tonight? To minutes to vote on and what night those are. I know you sent me one set and I wasn't sure if they were all ready to go for tonight. Alright, so without further ado, we'll get into our first maybe the business, which is our continued deliberation on fifty five South Main Street. Lauren, if you could advance whoever needs to be or promote whoever needs to be promoted, and if you could put on the screen, your draft decision.
Absolutely.
And you had, do you have John's available too?
I do have John's available too. Let me know which one you'd like me to share first.
We'll bring up the whole thing and then when we get to condition twenty two, we'll look at both.
Sure. Okay.
Alright. Let me ju- let me just. Angela is telling us we have one set of minutes, I'm just asking what date. Alright, so this is pretty much the same as we've looked at the last time, there's been some. What is this? What's this over here? See comment at what?
Oh, this, my comment is just that at the last hearing session, you had indicated that Kevin would be voting on this application. But I just need that sorted out because if you're appointing the associate member, that's only in a situation where another member is not voting for some other reason, so you wouldn't have all six vote on this.
Okay, did did you, did you, did you do your Mullen thing so that you could vote? I presume she did, right?
I know Cassandra had prepared one, I'm not sure to the status.
I didn't, I didn't see it yet, Tom, or hear it. I didn't get any email from Cassandra.
Alright. In that case, should we just have Kevin as the voting member?
You can appoint Kevin as a voting member then.
Do we have to vote on that?
I, yes, you would, you, when you go to make the motion later, you can, you can make that.
Alright, so, let's continue to scroll.
Tom, as Chair, you just indicate that the associate member will be voting.
Whatever, I just want to make, I don't want to.
You don't have to vote on.
I don't want to have any technicalities, so, yep. Alright, we'll just keep scrolling down, I think. That's just all our usual preliminary things, alright, and then I noticed, if you noticed in the draft, Lauren added here and in another place, the references that the project is subject to DEP. So I know that that was a concern for some of the members. And I trust that will suffice.
It's another DEP reference.
Yep, yeah. Alright, so twenty two and twenty three were to deal with the affordable housing component. I had asked the last time that it be, you know, mirror some, what we did for the hotel project in the harbor. Payment and Lou, twenty three C, I just want everybody to be clear about that, that payment and Lou is not an option here. At least, that's what we're proposing, but again, the board wants to discuss that, we can. If you want, maybe at this time, bring up Attorney Danahy's version.
Can I ask a question first, please?
Sure.
Which is, does what we see written here now reflect a mirror image of what we agreed to when we allowed the harbor project to identify locations offsite for the affordable housing? Is it a mirror image?
No, we have Lauren.
It's not a mirror image in terms of content, it is the same spirit of the content. The reason why is that in the harbor decision that you're referencing, in hindsight, it was a bit bulky and sort of overstating some areas and some things that didn't really quite make sense. So what we've done is take that content and consolidate it in to a way that's a little bit more concise here for you, but it's the same spirit of the decision.
Thank you. So I'd like the record to reflect that because that will be important in light of the fact that it was in the previous meeting, not specified as such.
Okay. By the way, is Carolyn here?
Carolyn is here, yeah, she's joined us since, again, thank you. Alright, I'm promoting Carolyn now. And then I will pull up that message.
Joined by our town council, Carolyn Murray. Alright, let's, yeah. Let's bring up John's proposed version of twenty two.
Okay, you can see from Attorney Danahy right here, the proposed condition twenty two.
Now, this, this was presented to us the day today, and I said circulated to everybody to look at in comparison to what Lauren drafted. John, with all due respect, I know it says a lot about reciting the obligation. I think ours is a little more to the point about what it is we want to do. Especially where your version does, well, it recites in the bylaw as payment and move, but I throughout our whole discussions, that's really, at least in my vote, isn't that shouldn't be an option here.
And, and let me just say, Mr. Chair, I was left with the impression at the last meeting, we wanted to pretty much almost parrot the one from the harbor, which is actually almost verbatim, except for the bottom. Unfortunately, I have not had the benefit of looking at the proposed one and, and so, you know, again, I, I took away from the last meeting, that's what you really wanted to kind of like parrot. The exception was I was not going to say that we would have the option for payment and Lou. It was basically, should the applicant purchase a current affordable home or unit? That's the language I took away from the last meeting, so.
Yeah, I, I don't know, Lauren, are you able to flip back and forth?
Yes.
Did everybody on the board get to see both versions before tonight?
Yes.
Can I ask a question, which is if we are talking about the specifics of going back and forth between the language, do we have it demarcated on the screen so it's clear how parallel things are described?
What, what do you ask? Do you want to see a side by side?
Well, I, I, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is we, we, we are at the point where we would like to arrive at an agreement. And we have a number of situations which are being brought into the conversation in and out. So for example, reference to the harbor versus that the sentiment that the, the best case scenario is the project absorbs the affordable housing units. And I want to make sure that when we finalize this, that we have indeed achieved the objective we're interested in.
The version that Lauren has written has been viewed by Carolyn and I'll Carolyn comment as she wishes about anything she has to say, you know, anything she wants to add to this. But, you know, Lauren just explained, you know, and, and you know, John's not doing anything wrong, he parroted what was written for the harbor, which was what we talked about, and Lauren just explained how she edited it down to this. The spirit being the same. I think, I, I like this version in front of us better, only because I think it's more direct and to the point of what we want. Rather than the other decision had done a lot of recitation about what the inclusionary zoning bylaw is and why it exists, and I don't think we necessarily need all the editorial comment we had in the previous decision, Lauren's taken the liberty to, to to edit that down to this, so, I mean, my own personal thought would be this is our decision right here, this twenty two and twenty three.
One, one last comment, which is, if that's true, which it sounds like, can we somehow codify this so that this is a presentation of our stance about?
What happened with that echo and?
Somebody's got a su- extra mic open.
Well, you know, in- interestingly, a week or so ago, Steve Gomer from the Affordable Housing Trust had reached out to me, you know, because one of the problems with the current statement about inclusionary zoning in our bylaws, it says payment and Lou is an option, but doesn't define how we arrive at that figure. And he, he was hoping that the bylaw committee was going to address that, and as we are looking at Article Four in the next round of the work of the bylaw committee, we are indeed looking at the inclusionary zoning provision and cleaning it up, and there is at least a proposal that would adopt more of this concept going forward than the other. I thi- I think in the proposal, payment and Lou is still there as a possible option, but it will certainly add a definition of how we arrive at payment, which we don't have now. So I think, yeah, the answer to your, the short answer is yes, the spirit of what we are doing here and with the harbors at least proposed to be carried over into us, the rework of the inclusionary zoning provision going forward.
One last comment, which is, are there any concerns or considerations that we must take if we include this description at this moment in how we address the placement of affordable housing units when we have a multi-housing unit project that is responsive to the state's regulations. What I'm, what my, my point is, I don't want us to get into a situation where we codify something now, that then places us in a, a situation in the future that requires that we have to return here to codifying a, an exception or, or, or something that we all agree on that will limit us in the future.
Carolyn can correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the decision for the harbor project, the decision for this project or just for these projects. And these, what we're doing here is not binding on what we might write into the bylaw in the future, or even into future individual decisions, so we may, we may come up with another multifamily project somewhere and write something different.
That's right, Tom.
Yeah.
Correct.
We're, we're not, we're not tying our hands here, but I, you know, again, the spirit of what we are doing here is attempted to be carried over into the provision when it gets rewritten, this is for the fall.
So there's no, there's no liability or unintended consequences by the actions that we're taking now?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not, not, not in my opinion, I mean, you're, you're following the inclusionary zoning bylaw and you know, even though you've sort of tried to follow the spirit and intent of what was contained in a, in a prior decision, every decision stands on its own merits and the conditions can be slightly different, so I, I'm comfortable with that.
Right, thank you. I just needed to know that.
Sure.
Alright.
Mister Chairman, if, if, if I may, just one, one thing that jumped out at me that um, I, I know your preferences for the version we're looking at here right now. One thing that Attorney Danahy also proposed was if there is an existing affordable unit that exists that doesn't have the, a, a perpetual deed restriction, that they could acquire and, you know, that property and impose the perpetual deed restriction. I don't know whether that's something the board is interested in incorporating into this decision or not.
Karen, I see your hand up before we address that.
Two, two points I'd like to make, notwithstanding the efforts of the applicant's attorney here to prepare specific wording for us to adopt. I, I'd like us to be the ones with the wording with regard to what's been proposed, that's shown on the screen right now and read. My understanding is that's our wording. I would add an item to it that I would like to see so that there's some more definitive as to when things happen, as opposed to e- eternally looking at things for an open-ended period of time, is if item twenty three B had a time limit on it. I would propose that if the offsite option is deemed infeasible, that a period of time be added to that applicant will be required to, and then carry on as written right there.
The, the trigger is getting an occupancy from that, right, at the beginning of twenty three. That's the triggered timeline.
We can't sell anything, once we get it built, it's going to sit there vacant until the applicant finds okay, two affordable units. So the incentive here is to find it before they can even sell anything.
Okay, that, that effectively puts some fire into the process, and I appreciate that. Thanks for pointing that out.
Can you flip John's up again, Lauren? Where was that particular paragraph that Carolyn just?
It's right at the very end.
Oh, right there, right there at the end. Everybody take a look at that, I mean, the idea that adding, making something affordable that is affordable, but not state affordable into a state, you know, that, I think that's not a bad idea, so.
There are two. Does no harm.
Yeah.
Mister Chair?
Yes, John.
Two points, the reason why I raised it. First is, I, I was trying to address the issue that you're just talking about. Right now, many people might say there's some affordable apartments or, or I doubt houses, but that are currently in existence. If in the event that, whether it's us or somebody going forward is going to purchase the building, then they have to make them affordable in perpetuity. That means that you're not going to have it fall, you know, it's going to be that way. Second thing is, I know in situ, and I know I've come across it in some of the real estate deals, that in the past, some affordable homes have been, or condos have been restricted for a period of thirty years. And then it falls off. So, you know, if something's going to fall off the list, you know, I think you're, you're, you're trying to encourage that something stays in perpetuity, and that was the thing I took away from the last meeting that I thought would be beneficial, but again, that's up to you.
No, that's good, I I, I, I would be in favor of taking this thing that's highlighted in blue and making it condition twenty three F in our, in our draft.
Could I address one other point? I know, which is number E. That's being proposed, something to the effect that if the building is, is saying destroyed casualty, then you want whatever is there to be reconstructed there within. Again, that's up to you folks. My, my thought would be that you'd want to keep it open-ended, because who knows what's going to be there in a hundred years? The key to the whole thing is having the deed restriction, because it's going to run with the land, if it's in a condo or a condex or condominium, no matter what's going to be built there, something has to be built that, that's going to be affordable. You may say, yeah, we want a big massive building, who knows what the times are going to want it in, in the future. But by having that, you're basically saying it has to be within one structure, if that's what it is. But maybe the future boards will say, I don't want something that has, within, whether it's just property or something else, maybe more smaller, smaller structures, you know, they're small homes. I, I forgot what town it is down on, on twenty four, but you know, like, you know, it's up to you, but I'm just trying to suggest to you. Yes, you want everybody, you don't want to have separate segregated affordability component, I get that. But I was just saying that, you know, you might find in, in the future, they do want to have everything separated, separated out in a nice little community, as opposed to having one big mass structure, but again, that was the only comment I had on your proposal, I just read it right now for the first time, so that's why I would have had that earlier.
Or change, changing the word structure at the end to development, be better.
Yeah, that might make sense. It's up to you folks, but.
Alright, uh, De- Deirdre, was your hand up?
I'm sorry, it was, but thank you. And again, I apologize to the board and the applicants, I had this tested, I have my video running and and it isn't just the screen is black, so I do apologize. No, Tom, you answered my question, I'm all set, thank you.
Alright, thanks, Amy. Amy, I see your hand up, but you're muted.
I want to be mindful of the fact that we are in an environment physically where numerous circumstances could befall us and the individual properties in downtown might be at risk. And I totally appreciate the comment from the applicant's lawyer. One issue I would raise is that do we have to address the question of twenty year out or ten year unexpected environmental effect, uh, event that causes significant areas of town to be diminished and the properties are no longer viable as residential properties and they have to be removed. I know I'm forecasting out.
I don't, I don't know that we have the legal basis to do anything about that at this time in state law or our town bylaw. Carolyn can jump in on that one.
I mean, there's, there's always the state statute under chapter one forty three, that if we've, you know, if the building commissioner determines that, you know, a building is unsafe and needs to come down or needs to be secured in some way, there, there's certainly that authority. I, I don't know if you were thinking of a, of a different scenario, if you're thinking of, I know last, at our last meeting, we were talking about climate change and rising sea level and that sort of thing. There is nothing currently that addresses climate change or rising sea levels destroying properties per se, but obviously, if those events should occur, just like if there's a lightning strike, or if there's an earthquake, or any other kind of natural disaster, it would fall to the building inspector to determine whether or not the structure is sound or needs to be raised or not.
So with, with that, if a, if a structure was in, in fact, made uninhabitable, how, what, what will happen to us when we go to account for a struc- to it, to a a lot that no longer can be occupied by residential structure? Do we have to start worrying about that?
I'm going to interject that A- Amy's point is a really good foresight point. And it's not out of the realm of possibilities when we look further out decades-wise into the realm of possibilities of not just losing structures to act of gods or one-off events that can be repaired, but actually losing the lot, losing the parcel as a developable place that we may have already inventoried as a specific property for the purposes we're talking about here, what happens? And I, I commend Amy for making this point and raising this now, when this isn't something any of us are going to be around to have to deal with, but someone will at some point in all likelihood. Thank you, Amy.
If, if I may, Mister Chairman, and we've talked about this a little bit at our last meeting, so I, I mentioned that there are, you know, communities down the Cape that are seeing properties due to coastal erosion, they are seeing a loss of properties and loss of structures on those properties. You, if, if your question is what happens to this permit if the lot and the structure no longer exist, well, the permit runs with the land and runs with this specific parcel that we've identified. If the parcel no longer exists, no one is going to be building anything on it, so that, that permit really becomes a bit of a nullity. If your, if your question is more aimed at things like, should we be thinking about sustainable building designs or requirements that might be built into our either general bylaws or zoning bylaws so that going forward, maybe some properties or structures are going to be less vulnerable to, to loss due to natural occurrences? That's certainly something that, yes, I, I think is, is worth exploring, but this particular permit for this particular lot is not going to be affected by that. You know, and if I could add one further comment on, you know, to follow up on Attorney Danahy's comment about, you know, if if the affordable units or the building in which it located happened to be destroyed by fire or casualty, I know you've just changed the new structure to the new development, I'm wondering if you might just want to say they shall be replaced in kind? Because perhaps, suppose to Amy's point, suppose something is destroyed by natural disaster and the lot is gone, and there is going to be no replacement on site. I, I think the board still wants those two affordable units to be secured somewhere, so if they have to then find two new units someplace else, that, you know, I, I, I think this gives you a little more flexibility.
Yeah, okay.
Could I just, I guess I'm lost here, okay? We're talking about in the future, that if a lot is destroyed, that I mean, if a lot's destroyed, nobody can build, there's not going to be anybody building any two units or one unit anywhere else, it's gone. That's to the point of the deed restriction, the deed restriction runs with the land, if the land's gone, it's gone. You know, this special permit stays on the land, right? Let's say that there's a fire, burns the building down, let's say the brook turns into a raving, raging river, and now there's only half the lot you can build on. No matter what, two units, if it's built there, are going to have to remain there. Because that's the, it's deed restricted. But to suggest that they're going to have to replace it in kind somewhere else is, is beyond the pale, you can't.
I, I, isn't, yeah, but isn't your paragraph E dealing with the idea that these units are offsite? And I think if they're offsite and destroyed, they would have to be replaced somewhere somehow.
Well, you can't they'd have to replace on that site, because that's where the deed restricts it to. Let's, let's put it down to fifty. In the future, it's not going to say, I own this land, so now I'm going to be having to go and find another lot somewhere and cohabit it when the prices on the lots are, it's going to be higher, you, you can't do that. Hamstring.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Person to, to do something like that, that's, that's, that's a complete you can't, it's like me saying to you, guess what, your house, when it goes down, you can't build on it. I'm restricting you, I mean, let's put it to this way, you can restrict it, it's, it's going to be found nullity, you can't. But each and every one of you, I can't restrict your deed and say, because your house is destroyed, you got to go build it somewhere else in town. That's what you're trying to say in this, this, the section.
Hold on, hold, Amy, hold on, Chris, I saw your hand up before the other two popped up, but.
My read of the in-kind language is that it gives the applicant flexibility so that if the two affordable units are somewhere else, let's say on Beechwood, and something happens to the units on Beechwood, the applicant is still on the hook to have two affordable units somewhere. The in-kind language, I think, gives you a lot of flexibility there. And your deed restriction comment, I think would be valid if we were talking about affordable units at fifty five South Main. But because we're talking about affordable units offsite, I'm not sure I agree with your deed restriction comment.
So how do you, Mister, Mister, how do you enforce it, though? Let's go twenty years down the road, okay? We have two people, two homes, deed restricted, who have down on Beech, on Beechwood. Houses are destroyed, they can't build on that lot. I mean, if they build on the lot, we're having a, a
Yeah, I, I think your, your, your paragraph E, if I may, because it contemplates a loss that you're going to be able to rebuild on site. Whereas Amy's bringing up a future scenario of being unable to build on site. And, and then, you know, then I see your, I see the issue you're raising, that's problematic, and Amy, I'm not sure we have the tools developed yet to deal with this.
And, and, and that's why I raised it, because I, I
We're not going to solve it with this permit, though.
That's exactly right, and, and I think that in all fairness to the situation that we face right now, that we have to come up with an explanation for how it is that there's a fair resolution for a situation like this. I do not want to leave someone who has invested in a resource that is then enjoyed by a community and then a disaster befalls them that is totally by the act of, you know, giant storms or whatever, and that we find ourselves in a situation where somebody who is not even attached to the original land. um, is now stuck. So I, I know that that's, this seems far off, but it's not far off because we're paying for a study now that is explaining to us as a town exactly what the probabilities are and the conditions that might happen as time passes. And so I, I, I actually feel, um, we want to find some way that the project has a time limit where it is accountable and then time passes and then the future occurs because otherwise in other communities, no one will build. No, no one will take.
You, I mean, I, I, I have to, you know, I, I agree with the sentiment and I agree. We have to plan for climate change. I, I really do. And we, and we need, we, we as a species need to start coming up with new tools, both development wise, regulatory wise. But it is at the moment speculative. We can't make decisions based on speculation. And if large sections of the town end up underwater in fifty years, uh, whether we have the required number of affordable units under whatever version of forty B exists fifty years from now is going to be kind of an irrelevant point because we're going to have bigger problems.
Oh, there'll be bigger problems, but that doesn't make this problem go away. We have language here, Tom. The last point ends with the word perpetuity.
Yeah.
So can I have a legal definition of perpetuity? Because in my mind, that means forever.
It is. It's infinity.
Okay. So that's the problem with a lot. When you guys get an offsite lot that's at a great price with a great view and maybe even water access, which works good for ten years, but the problem you got it with the great view and the water access at a great price was because it's going to be underwater in thirty years. And then that lot is lost. That is not provided in perpetuity to the town.
So let me just, let me respond, please. You're all making, not all, some of you are making an assumption that we're going to get water view. And that all of a sudden there's going to be some kind of sea rise. First of all, you know as well as I do, you live in Cohasset. Anybody close to the water, you're going to be paying through the nose because everybody wants to build and it's people who are very affordable, affluent who are building these large buildings, homes on all over the coastline. Happens in situ at here, happens up there. It's happening all over. Second thing is though, I, to the point that you're saying, when somebody buys an affordable unit, they buy it. It's deed restricted to be able to sell for a certain price point in perpetuity. When they sell it, it's going to be affordable for the next person and the next person. In the event that there's something wrong with the lot, say there's some kind of migration, say that somebody next door uh, does, does something that ruins their property unbeknownst to the, the homeowner. The homeowner is going to have insurance to pay for it. You're basically suggesting that that person in the future, ten, twenty, thirty, fifty years, they are going to have to, can't sell their land. They're going to have to find another spot. It's not the person who builds it ten, fifteen, twenty years ago that's going to find it. It's the person who owns it, who's owning an affordable house. That's what you're suggesting. And that's why I'm telling you, you know, the future, that's not necessarily a good policy because you're going to actually hurt those people who you're trying to help. I, I, with respect to us here, your condition, your, shall we say, a carrot, your, 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 your strength is to say that we cannot do anything, can't sell a unit until we find based upon this, all the plans based that set forth in subpart B, that we have to notify the board, we have to give you the plans, the design, the marketing strategy, all these other, uh, and, and other related matters to tell you what's going to happen. Okay. It's the first time you're asked for that. I see no problems with that. But now you're suggesting if something happens, you got to find another two. Well, of course, because we haven't yet found it. Um, until we get, until we find a location, until we get somebody who's going to buy it and it becomes affordable. You, you're, you're speculating what's going to happen ten, fifteen, twenty years and you can't do that, whether it's us or somebody else.
I, I.
Anything could happen, you know, meteoric could hit the house and then they're going to say, you know, I mean, it's getting so speculative, you're, it makes no sense.
Yeah, I, I have to urge my fellow members that you just can't make decisions, legal decisions based on speculation. You know, you're, you're bringing up good points of what all of us have to deal with in the future, but we, you can't put it on the back of this project and you can't, you can't just ba- base it on pure speculation of what might happen. I, I, I can't, you know, I, I support the sentiment, but I can't support putting it in and, and, and I haven't heard how you do it either.
Well, I think the in-kind works. What's the problem with the in-kind that provides the flexibility in the future?
Kevin, e- even if you throw out the examples, the in-kind language still works, Tom.
All right. All right. If you guys are happy with the, John did.
I, I, I want to just make my last comment, which is I am trying to protect the person who's trying to renovate the space. And so I think it's, um, however we fashion the language, whether we put a time span on it or we have some way of denoting that there is the possibility that something could occur, but there has to be a point at which the person who is investing in the property and with the full intent of that, living a useful life that, that, that we don't end up in a situation coming back to somebody and saying, well, you know, the whole thing fell down and now you need to build it someplace else. And, and we, it, this is not just a climate change issue. If you go to Florida and that apartment building that fell down because it was poorly constructed, it's the same problem. So I just don't want the person who is investing in the resources to renovate downtown to be the sole liable party for something that, that is plausible.
All right.
And, and, and this, we can't, maybe we can't actually solve this one now, but.
No, we can't. You're, you're, you're talking about.
But Tom, if we have spoken about it, that means then we have to think about it in the future. We have to think about it as a part of our job.
I don't disagree, but the, the, the language of the in-kind, I think, in, in large part does address this, but you're, you're, you're still engaging in what ifs, what ifs, what ifs? You're not proposing anything concrete to actually write in this, which I, with all due respect, anybody who proposes something has to do because, you know, in the real world here, we have to write an actual legal decision.
We have surplus the right language, which is that if in-kind does not create an excessive burden on somebody who has been involved in this situation like we're describing, then that's as good as we can do now. But if we fail to acknowledge that possibility, it will be ambiguous and be fought out in the courts.
All right. Anybody else on the board? I'd like to bring this to a head and. All right. Anybody have a motion to make?
I'll make a motion that we approve the project with the decision as drafted.
I second.
As, as drafted by Lauren, as edited, sitting here tonight.
That's right.
Thank you. Do you agree your second?
I second. Yeah.
All right. Any further discussion about that? Uh, all in favor, roll call, alphabetical roll call.
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmire abstain.
Kevin Heine, aye.
Deirdre Hobson, aye.
Chris Black, aye.
All right. Oh, and I didn't say at the beginning, uh, Kevin's vote is the official vote. So we have a four to one vote on this. Uh, designating Kevin to be the official vote tonight because of Deirdre missing the last meeting and not having the Mullen thing done yet. So.
I think you have four zero, one abstention. Am I correct?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Four zero, four zero one. Yeah. All right. All right. Thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the board, thank you very much. I know it's been a long process. We really do, on behalf of my clients, appreciate your input. Um, and I want to thank you. Um, it's, and then it's been fun in some respects. It's been hard and working. But you know, a- as a result of all this, having done this here in the town of Situate, um, good projects come out of it. And I just want to commend you all for, for, for putting up with us and for me in particular. And again, I thank you very much.
John, I appreciate you.
Good luck. Good luck with your project.
Yeah, good luck.
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Um, thank you. And Cassie, I see your comment. Thank you too. Good luck with this. All right. Uh, the next is our continued hearing on three fifty-five Jerusalem Road, a hearing under the scenic road bylaw. We have with us.
The applicant, Mike Hilsinger is here.
Okay. Brian Joyce is going to speak tonight.
We do have Brian. I'll promote Brian now.
All right. Uh, Mr. Hilsinger, Mr. Joyce, which one of you wants to start?
Uh, hi, this is Mike Hilsinger and I will start. Last time we met, uh, we discussed work on, uh, four trees along Jerusalem Road, uh, two of which, uh, were proposing to take down, uh, due to the health of the trees. Um, my understanding is that the board didn't have any issues with the work that was proposed. Uh, but the issue, um, that was brought up was who owns the trees exactly? Which side of the uh, roadway right of way did they fall on? Um, so what we've done, uh, since the last meeting, uh, is I, uh, talked again with Chris Murray and then, uh, more recently with Brian Joyce, uh, we have a, uh, site plan that, um, brought, that, uh, Chris had supplied us, uh, which Brian has since seen as well, uh, on it are some, uh, monuments that we used as point of reference, uh, to determine where these trees are exactly. Uh, my understanding, I think that, uh, Brian is in agreement is that the two trees proposed to take down are on private property. Uh, and there is one tree, uh, that was proposed to have a leader, uh, cut off of, uh, that is in the roadway right of way. And so, uh, if, uh, the board is in agreement with that, we'll, we'll show this plan and Brian can speak to it. Um, we'll show that plan if the board's in gre- in agreement with that, we, we will go ahead with the work on the trees that are on private property. And then the question remains, uh, would you like us to do the work on the tree that's in the roadway right of way? Or do you want the tree warden to do the work on the tree in the road right of way? Um, so with that, I can, if you want to share a screen, I can show you that plan, uh, which Brian has seen.
Hey, well, well, that's coming up. Uh, so this is Brian. I'm, I'm currently driving, so I'm just going to be speaking, not, not on camera, really looking at the screen, but, um, the, uh, so Mike and I talked and, and just generally when, when we go out and do these surveys on trees, the, um, what we use are, are utility plans we have in hand and or the assessors maps. And we, uh, use the scale on the paper. Again, these utility plans are generally like a forty scale. You might have eight hundred foot block on there. So, you know, that's, that's the survey level detail that we can do in-house. Um, and I know Tom, you and I had gone back and forth on, um, uh, an email, but, but basically what we do is take monuments or measurements from what we see on a utility plan and we scale it off to determine, uh, where the property line is. Uh, we don't have survey equipment and we don't have survey training in-house. So, uh, that's what we do and there's no real budget to do a full level survey. In this particular circumstance where, where the trees are, um, you know, uh, they're deteriorated and the applicant is willing to remove them, uh, we're completely in favor of that and, uh, and, and that includes that leader as well.
Yeah, I, it, it, it was an email exchange where Brian alerted this afternoon of that, um, you know, the determination had been made that these two things are on private property. And my point in response is the same as the point I made at the hearing last week that I find it, I'm flabbergasted that the town doesn't know where the layouts of all of its roads are between either town records buried somewhere or the Norfolk County Engineering Department. And I pointed out that I went on the Norfolk County Engineering Department site. There's an onsite index. There are layouts for various sections of Jerusalem Road. I could not open them to see the detail of them. But th- these records exist and this should be something, you know, and be beyond this bylaw. Um, you know, for anything that the town's doing in a road, it kind of know where the boundaries are for liability reasons. And I'm just flabbergasted by it. But, you know, if these are, if everybody's comfortable, this is on private property, then they are not within the jurisdiction of this bylaw. Uh, Brian, you also mentioned in your late response, like around six o'clock that, you know, you would do some mitigation elsewhere, uh, because you don't think mitigation is appropriate for the right of way in this location. But, uh, I'd like you to speak to that. But, you know, I, I think going forward, you know, like Carol and I would agree, from just a liability perspective, the town needs to know where the hell its roads are and what the boundaries are between private property and public property. I'm just astounded that we don't have a better grasp of that. And I appreciate you don't have the in-house.
Oh, sorry.
And I appreciate that there aren't the in-house tools to do it all fresh today, but some of this work layouts were laid out a hundred and plus years ago and then.
Right. So the, the level of effort that goes along with, you know, what the, what the project or work is, if we have a leader or somebody reporting a limb or a tree in this circumstance, we do the best of our ability. If we're going to do a water project or a sidewalk project, we hire a survey company and we do that, you know, get down to the, the, the level of detail you're talking about. Um, but for, you know, tree surveys, and I, and I said this in my email earlier, I would rather pay, I would rather just, if it, if it's a question at all, I would rather pay money to plant new trees than pay a survey company just to determine where exactly that property lines is. Um, but the, you know, it, it's kind of a catch twenty-two or maybe something we didn't think about when we passed the bylaws. If it's on private property, the cert- the, the property order is not going to do a survey, uh, just to say that, you know, that they don't need to remove the tree. And then the town, again, we don't have the budget. It's kind of an unfunded mandate, uh, to do survey level detail to determine, you know, a tree trunk that that, that may grow into the right of way or may just be on the edge. Um, so we, we do the best we can with the tools we have and a forty scale plan trying to determine a tree is, it's not, it's not like a site plan you might see for a singular house development, which is, which has all the property lines and all of the layout and everything down with a, with a much tighter scale. So it's just, uh, you know, that, those are the tools we have and, and that's what we can do in-house.
Yeah, I, and I appreciate what you're saying and not, nobody's saying you should get a new survey, but for example, in the work on, the water work on Beechwood Street up by my house, if that was surveyed, that surveyor di- didn't just come up with drawing lines out of thin air, that surveyor probably looked for and found a layout for Beechwood Street. I'm just, my point is that these things already exist and do not require it to be surveyed.
You're, you're right, but the, the scale of a survey of a singular property has, has a much tighter scale and can determine where the.
Again, I'm not asking you to, I, I'm not asking you to survey it. I'm saying that the layout that's in front of this house exists somewhere.
It's, it is, it's on a utility plan, but the utility plan scale is, is so far zoomed out that you're trying to determine what, what a small tree looks like with, when you're looking at, you know, a scale of uh, a drawing that may have twenty or thirty houses on it. Um, so not zoomed, like this is zoomed in scale. Sorry, I'm driving and looking, but, but that's assumed in scale of a, of a much larger plan. It's, it's in, uh, picture of a much larger plan. So it's not, not a level of detail, uh, for one singular lot for these, what we have for road layouts. And if we need to do something, you know, construction wise or, or, or something that's, you know, I don't want to say less important or more important, but it's, you know, we, we would get that survey level detail like a water van or something like that.
Anybody else on the board want to weigh in on what we do here tonight? Anybody else from the board want to weigh in on what we do here tonight? Carolyn, you too.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Yeah, hold on, Amy, is your hand up for this one, because otherwise, I'll be fine. All right, Clark, then go ahead.
Yeah, it seems like, you know, that, that this falls in the category of what's practical, feasible and reasonable. And if the homeowner wants to take off a limb that is, is damaged, that might be a hazard to either his property or, or the public. I think that, I think that's a good and reasonable thing to do, coming before us because it's appears to be in the, in the public right of way is what's required and that's what they're doing. You know, at, at this point, I think we should approve the request.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that part of it, it's just my other point, it's going to be a recurring problem, but anyway, anybody else on the board?
Well, I'd be happy to talk to you about what, what engineering resources might, might make sense for different types of problems.
I just suggest people avail themselves of the Norfolk County Engineering Department and do them. Telling you, they have a lot of stuff, but anyway, Kevin.
Yeah, I would just like to hear council's opinion on the liability to the town. Should work be done by the private citizen on the limb in the town's right of way? Whether that opens us as a town up to liability concerns should the person or their contractors get hurt. And I'm, I'm just not trying to, you know, everyone probably on this call thinks I'm really projecting catastrophe here, but you know, this type of work is not without its own incidents, you know, removing limbs and trees is on the more dangerous spectrum of occupational hazards and propensity for them. So Carolyn, if you could provide some guidance on this, it'd be helpful, I think.
Certainly, so following your, your initial hearing on this two weeks ago, where a lot of, we had more questions than we had answers. I had an opportunity to talk with both the town manager and we then got on the phone with Brian Joyce to talk a little bit about this. Um, a- as far as, you know, what the planning board is being asked to do. This is just a work permit to be issued by the planning board. No liability attaches to the town by virtue of us granting this permit or refusing this permit. But to your point, Kevin, there is the other issue of work being done by either a private party or private contractor on town property. So we're going to have to work through the town manager's office to get, you know, an agreement in place to make sure that the town is protected. And to make sure that if a private tree company is hired, I think last time the applicant did mention a particular company. You know, that we've got proof of insurance that the town is also named as an additional insured, et cetera, for that work.
All right, thank you for that, that's, that's easy to do in my, my experience.
The town with this issue with the boundary line, so we, we can issue this permit. And we require the town is, what's thrown out there about different two trees, something that wants as mitigation? Or, or is that impossible for us to do with the two trees being removed on our property?
Um, if I heard correctly, and maybe I didn't, I thought two of the trees, they're actually determined to be on private property, but there's only a leader that's coming over on town property, did I, is that what I heard?
So the two trees that are proposed to be removed are on private property. The one tree that has the leader that runs out over the street is on public property and on town property.
And are we removing that entire tree or just the leader?
Just.
On town property, just the leader. Um, so I, you know, I think, Mr. Chairman, you could certainly require some in-kind mitigation for that. But I think, I don't know how you've handled these in the past, I, I think there is a difference between removing a limb as opposed to removing an entire tree.
We don't have any precedent because we don't see these scenic road applications, that, that's a whole nother issue that I've
Right, right.
Not even going to open up tonight why that is, but, all right, Amy, you see your hand up?
Uh, yes, can, can somebody make a motion to circumscribe this particular situation in such a manner that we as a town could limit our liability for any adjustments to the vegetation that stands now? And agreed to develop an X, a, a plan for how we deal with the situation in the future. What we want to do is mitigate this situation now. We have to also acknowledge the fact that once you say there's a potential liability, you have to, you can't ignore it. So my recommendation would be for somebody to make a motion that we adjust, we, we adjust this situation and then can sit, plan to consider a, a policy or recommendation so that this, should this happen again, we have something to say about it.
I'm not so sure we need a motion to that, to do that. I, I think let's focus on the motion to close this hearing first. I think the larger issue of I mean, I think part of it is buy-in into this bylaw. I think it is, you know, a better understanding of the town knowing where its boundary lines are without the need of a survey for each individual project. And I don't, I don't think those would need a motion, I think just the powers that be in DPW and Town Hall and maybe this board needs to just bang their heads together to see how we're going to deal with scenic roads going forward. I had pointed out, and one of my responses to, my response today, that you know, the state passed the Scenic Road Act, which is what our bylaws based on in, while being aware of the tree wardens' powers. And this, maybe they're conflicting statutes, but you know, I, I think the underlying problem is we're not seeing these applications, so we don't know what to deal with these different problems yet. We're not seeing them, and I can't believe there's been no utility work in the town. And I can't believe that every tree is coming down because they're a hazard that needs to be but that's a larger decision, but I don't need a motion to resolve those issues.
All right.
We need to have a sit-down, we need to have the sit-down with the powers that be, and there's departments to either make this bylaw work or, or not.
So I request, I rescind my request for a motion and ask that the chair find a means by which we can bring this discussion to a conclusion.
Okay, well, I, right now, I guess I didn't obtain a motion that we grant the scenic roads permit to allow the town and, and or the private owners, they may contract with each other to remove the overhanging limb from the tree that's within the town right of way.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Uh, any further discussion?
So where, 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 where is the named insured for the town's protection? Is that, we're leaving that to others?
That's, yeah, but Kevin, that's standard operating procedure.
For the town.
Anytime the town and a private party engage in some activity. Uh, I don't think we need to get into the contractual relationships of the town.
No.
And it's standard operating procedure, we would never allow a private citizen to do work on public property without an indemnification and the insurance in place.
That's all I wanted to hear, thank you, Tom.
Okay, I mean, if, if, if that does happen, then somebody's not doing their job, but all right, that's the motion, uh, taking out the medical roll call, all in favor?
I.
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmore, I.
Kevin, I, I.
Deirdre Hobbs, and I.
Chris Flex, I.
Uh, Mr. Hillsinger, thank you for coming forward with this, I'm sorry for the confusion and chaos, but I appreciate your efforts in trying to do this all the right way.
Well, we're happy to do it, we like to do things the right way whenever we can, so I think that we've come to a logical conclusion here and I'll work with Chris to get that limb taken care of to the best of our ability, but thank you for your time.
And Brian, thank you for being here tonight, drive safe.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, what time is it here, seven thirty-two, all right. Another is a public hearing, new public hearing, a large home plan review for thirty-fourth notch, Lauren, if you wouldn't mind reading the public notice.
Absolutely. Notice of Public Hearing Class of Planning Board pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight and Section three hundred dash five point four, the class of zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform, webinar ID eight-six-two nineteen ninety-four eight-eight-five-five. Password four-three-three-five-four on Wednesday, April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three at six-thirty PM for a large house plan review for property being shown on classed assessor's map C two eleven nineteen thirty forest notch class at Massachusetts zero-two-zero-two-five. The application is for a large house plan review for renovation in addition to a single-family home for a new total residential gross floor area of three thousand eight hundred and one square feet. The application is submitted by John and Diane Roach of Thirty Forest Notch. In class it, a copy of the application and plans accompanying documents are on a file for viewing in the town clerk's office at class at Town Hall, forty-one Highland Avenue. Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM, Tuesday, eight-thirty AM to seven PM and Friday, eight-thirty AM to one PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting the class at Massachusetts Active Planware Application website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual meeting at the time designated, sign Thomas J. Callahan, Chair, Planning Board. And before you tonight, you have John Teriyaki and John and Diane Roach for the application.
Yes, I, I was, thank you for reading that, Lauren, and I was wondering if young Mr. Roach there is going to make the presentation for us.
Oh, no, that's our, that's our contractor.
Okay, John, I presume you're going to present this, so go right ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you, good evening, John Teriyaki, Teriyaki Architectural Design. And the Roaches, the homeowners are here as well, I'm just going to share my screen and go right into the proposed design. Uh, so here's the site plan by Merrill Engineering, showing in red the site plan changes. Uh, we are adding, proposing to add a small covered porch about five foot eight by nineteen feet, site plan footprint-wise. And initially, we were not changing the footprint of the house at all. But then we were notified that the garage has to be reconstructed based on what we are planning to do. So we want, we decided to enlarge the garage slightly, about eighteen inches towards the left side of the property and about two feet towards the front. So we submitted a revised square footage calculation and revised architectural drawings, so the total residential gross floor area will be three thousand eight hundred sixty-four square feet. So there's about a approximately sixty-three square foot increase from the initial application. Otherwise, there are no site plan changes proposed. Uh, because this is primarily a project about adding a new second floor over the existing house. And with that, I will just jump to the architectural drawings and I can come back to the site plan as needed. So here's the existing house footprint, the existing elevations, the front elevation, existing two-car garage, the, the side elevation. And then here was the right side elevation and then the rear elevation of the house. And what we were proposing to do is essentially adding a new second floor under a roof and dormer type language to create additional bedroom space above the first floor. And this shed dormer and gable roof language continues consistently around the house following kind of a cape-type roof line. And since the house is not conforming with setbacks, we did go in front of the zoning board to get approval under Section eight for extending the non-conformity vertically, since we're increasing the roof height. And the project was recently approved and a decision was issued by the zoning board approving the project. Other than that, square footage wise, I mentioned three thousand eight hundred sixty-four square feet on both levels. So since we are over the thirty-five hundred square foot threshold, uh, we would need a large home review for this project. But primarily, again, an architectural project and there are no changes to driveways or any other site or circulation patterns or lighting. Therefore, the narrative didn't go into those subjects in detail. But we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
All right, um, let me start with the board, I'll start in alphabetical order with Deirdre. Put you on the spot.
Oh, thanks, thanks, Tom, I, I don't have, it's actually a very lovely design. And I, I personally don't see any issues right away that jump out at me, I, I think that compared to some of the things we've seen in the last few months at this, you know, enlarging the houses, this is very tastefully done and fits the property and the neighborhood, most importantly. I don't think it's going to jump out in that neighborhood. I think that square footage wise, it's relatively modest in this day and age, so those are my comments.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Chris.
Uh, nothing bad, looks like a great project.
Yeah, um, it, the, this increase in height is nowhere near the, um, what, what's, what's allowed, I think something like twenty-four feet to the midpoint of Rafter. Um, the, the elements of the second, uh, second story and the overall design, I think increased the, the value without disrupting a lot of the site. Seems to fit the, the scale of buildings um, in the immediate area. Uh, and overall, it looks like it's well on its way to being a successful project for the, uh, for the, uh, the homeowner. And, and, and their neighbors, I think, also. Um, so I'm in, certainly in favor of approving without conditions.
Thank you. Um, for my comment, I, I was curious if you had gone to the zoning board, so I'm glad that's been taken care of. Um, I did notice, you know, I, I agree with Deidre that, you know, in the scale of things we see and this is, this is really not a problem. But I noticed the other project that you're involved in that's coming after this, you did show us the comparisons with neighboring properties, we are the other properties in Forest Night, and I just can't recall, are they all one-story, two-story, and how does this fit into the scale?
Uh, it's a mixture right now. Um, I did look at the square footages of houses and I believe there are three houses. At least two in the high three thousands and one in the low three thousand, square footage wise, similar sized properties. It's certainly a mixture of one and two-story, although they are increasingly being modified and enlarged uh, in different ways, like the rest of Cohasset, but um, so we're, we feel confident that this will still stay in the, within the scale of that particular neighborhood.
Okay, thank you, and the other questions normally asked about is the lighting plan for this, is there any extraordinary amount of new lights being added and where they're being added and what, what they're designed for?
Um, the only exterior new lighting may be recessed lights under the porch, but that door, for example, is existing. There's existing lighting around the existing garage and no other new exterior lights proposed, which is why we didn't put together a lighting plan, but there may be some recessed lights under the new porch ceiling. Uh, those are the, really the only potential new lights.
I have no other comments, Amy.
Uh, yes, I would only echo Tom Callahan's comment for purposes of being consistent, we request that we have a local context, context analysis to ensure that that residence that's being proposed uh, fits comfortably within the community and that is not something that we see in your analysis. Second, I really appreciate, you've basically touched all the issues that are, what are our purview, but given that there are going to be some adjustments that are made in terms of the situation of the windows and the entry points, a lighting plan would be valuable. And then I would appreciate a, a little bit of a discussion of the height of the, of the house as you add a second story. Uh, taking into account whether or not you're changing Uh, taking into account whether or not you're changing any of the elevation of the, the. Um, proximate land around the structure. This is to ensure that you have designed a space that is, um, within the limits of the. Large house review because that's one of the critical elements.
Right, so there is no change to the grading. And the, the, to the peak, if you measure the height to the peak, the proposed height will be twenty-six point seven feet. And the existing is nineteen point eight, so it's a six point nine foot increase overall. Uh, from the same average grade. Um, so, and given the Cape duck roof line, it, that allows it to be significantly lower than the thirty-five foot limit. Um, and the proposed thirty-five foot limit to the peak. Um, a-again with the lighting, the entry points are not being changed. There is an existing door here with some lighting. There are existing garage doors. In this location, so, um, that's why we didn't put a plan together, but we're happy to, um. Submit a lighting plan as a condition if the board, um, requests it. Maybe for the building permit or maybe to the application as needed.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I'm, I'm prepared to, you know, to move on this tonight, and I would just think your, your data about the comparison of the sizes of it with the neighborhood. You could submit that after tonight and the lighting plan as well. I don't, I don't think it's going to impact our, our ability to make a decision. And before we go any further, I forgot that Lauren and I talked about this earlier. Carolyn, and if you, for this and the next one, if you don't think you need to be here, feel free to. To leave, I meant to say that before we got started.
Cause if, if you don't need me, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to leave.
I, I, I think we're good, so it's up.
All right, I will, I will see you on Monday night.
I just, I forgot about it, but, uh.
That's fine, thank you.
All right, take care. All right, um, Amy, all set? I'll go to Kevin if you want.
Yes, uh, I, I would say that for the purposes of continuity and consistency, that some sense of the local context. And how nicely this would fit into it is important for us for historical purposes.
Yeah, I'd be happy to submit that.
Thank you.
Um, and the lighting plan as well.
Thank you.
And I'm just, my suggestion was he not, that he not do that, that he doesn't necessarily have to hold up the decision tonight, but, uh.
I agree.
Kevin? Um, I think this is, um, as proposed and as presented, um, a, um, appealing project, um. For the applicant, um, to move forward with, um. Additionally, that, you know, the neighbors are okay with it. It fits in with the neighborhood, which it sounds like it does, and, um, they meet. Any of these other concerns, I'd like to see us move on this tonight, too.
Okay, is there anybody out in the public that wishes to be heard on this? I don't think I see anybody.
Tom, I, I just like to add, I literally drove into the neighborhood this afternoon. And, um, I absolutely see absolutely no reason for this project not to be approved tonight. And if I do agree, if Amy thinks we need some consistency on how we look at these projects, I would just have those, you know, based on a condition as we permit it tonight. I think that it, it fits in nicely with that neighborhood.
Would you like to start us off with a motion then? Up with a motion?
Motion, come up with a motion, uh, motion, uh, to, uh, accept the, um, large home review plans for thirty forest notch road. With the conditions that, uh, a lighting plan be submitted with that and, um, comparison. Of the neighborhood with the new structure.
And great, thank you. Anyone else second? All right, thank you, Amy. All right. Any further discussion? No, all right, we'll do alphabetical roll call, Clark.
All right.
Tom Callahan, I.
Amy Glassmeyer, I.
Kevin Heine, I.
Deirdre Hobbs and I.
Chris Black, I.
Great, okay, and that's proved, uh, John, just get that material to us as soon as possible. To the Roach Roaches, good luck with this. Enjoy, enjoy your newly expanded home.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, good luck with your project.
Appreciate it.
All right, um, I see that we did put the other thing on our agenda for eight o'clock, but in case anybody else was sticking to that, let's just stick to it. Let's get two little things out of the way. Um, I got an email from Jackie Dormitzer of the Historical Commission. They would like somebody from the planning board. To attend their meeting on Monday, May eighth. That's six forty-five in the historical room of the library. Um, the reason for that is they want to discuss the establishment of a new historic district in Cohasset. And would like to make us aware of that and get our input. Um, Monday, the eighth, I, Clark and I have zoning board zoning by law committee meeting that night, so we're out. I'm meetinged out anyway. Uh, I'd like somebody to volunteer for that if they can. Amy, is that your hand up?
Uh, yes, well, first off, let's, let's hear of the, the historic district.
Uh, she didn't tell me where it's proposed. I guess that's the secret for the meeting, so.
I see, well, I.
She just would like to have a planning board representative at the meeting.
I'm happy to attend that meeting.
Okay, so it's.
And I'd love anyone else to go with me.
Yeah, if you're gonna be, if there's gonna be more than one of you, just let us know in case we have a quorum issue and have to post it. So, sorry, but, uh, it's Monday, the eighth, six forty-five at the, uh, Paul Pratt Library, so thank you for doing that.
Can you say what time it is again?
Six forty-five. I'll forward you her email.
Thank you.
Um, I'll forward it to the other members of the board, uh, but Clark and I have spoken for that night, but others, others I'll let you go if you'd like, so thank you for that. Um, I didn't get from Angela what night's meeting minutes we have. We have one set of minutes to approve. Angela, if you could just let us know what night they are, we can get that done quickly and, and then finish up, so. Um, otherwise. And anything else that anybody needs to discuss, I'll just let everybody know that we are gonna post a meeting. For this board and for the zoning by law committee for town meeting. Uh, as the select board and the advisory committee do, uh, there'll be an agenda that's, we're just copying the agenda they use, and it's just in case. We have to take any votes on anything, but. Uh, this board's votes were reported in the warrant on all the zoning articles. The zoning articles remain at the end of the warrant. Somewhat concerned about that, but working on that issue with people. Um, so, um, I hope everybody will be there and, um, you know. You don't have to sit together, but sometimes we do as a board. But, uh, the meeting starts at seven. If you could all be there a little early so that we can just take our planning board meeting all at its order. Um, uh, to, you know, again, it's ju-just in case we needed to make any substantive decision at town meeting, so. Um, do we know what night we're approving yet? No, all right, well, we'll put them off the minutes till the next meeting. Um, are we expecting anyone else, Lauren, or can we get going with this?
You can proceed. John Teriyaki and Jeff Pass that are both here on behalf of the applicant and the applicants themselves are here, Alex and Hating Notus.
Okay, so our next matter is a public hearing, new public hearing for a large home plan review for one twenty-nine Nichols Road. Uh, Lauren, if you wouldn't mind reading the notice.
Sure. Notice of public hearing closet planning board pursuant to mass general law chapter forty-eight and section three hundred dash five point four of the class zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a virtual public hearing on the Zoom platform webinar ID eight six two nineteen ninety-four eight eight five five pass code four three three five six seven. On Wednesday, April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM for a large house plan review for property being shown on cost of assessors map E three twenty-one eight. One twenty-nine Nichols Road, cost Massachusetts. The application is for the large house plan review for the removal of an existing nonconforming detached garage. In addition of a conforming attached garage with a bonus room above to add. To a, a single family home for a new total residential gross floor area of six thousand four hundred and seventy-two square feet. The application is submitted by Alexander and Haley Nadas of one twenty-nine Nichols Road, cost Massachusetts. A copy of the application, plans and accompanying documents are on file for viewing in the town clerk's office at class at town hall forty-one Highland Avenue. Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight thirty AM to four thirty PM Tuesday, thirty AM to seven PM and Friday, eight thirty AM to one PM. Electronic versions of application material can be obtained by visiting the class at Massachusetts active planning board application website. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should access the virtual media at the time designated. Sign Thomas J Callahan Chair Planning Board.
All right, thank you, Lauren, and welcome everyone. Uh, who will be presenting for the applicant?
Uh, John Teriyaki again, Teriyaki Architectural Design. I think I'll start off and, uh, Jeff has it from Morse Engineering is also here. To have any, to just answer questions about the site plan and the homeowners, Alex and Haley Nadas are here as well. And maybe I'll give a brief overview and then, um. But, uh, you know, Jeff is here to answer any site questions as well, and, um. We can dive into the architecture as well. So I'm just gonna share my screen again. And to give you a context, uh, one twenty-nine Nichols is a unique property because. It is accessed by, so Nichols Road is, um, above the screen here. And this property is surrounded completely by a loop road, almost like an island. Um, therefore, it has a, you know, fairly tight area to get around, and the existing garage is located right here. And it's a detached structure. It's very, very close to the street and it is extremely difficult to use. And the idea was to essentially. Emolish that structure and replace it with an attached garage, and I'm just gonna zoom in a little bit here. In the existing site plan, so you can see the light dash gray of the existing detached garage structure. And our proposed addition. That has a new garage and a mudroom addition with a small covered porch right here. And then above our proposed addition, we're proposing, uh, a bonus room that will be accessed by a separate stairway. This is the existing main body of the house, which remains unchanged. Yeah, uh, by the way, this project did go through a stormwater review, which was approved and, um. Jeff, again, could answer details of that review and questions regarding to, uh, any stormwater or other site issues. We do have a landscape design plan prepared by Sean Pappich Landscape Architecture. Which shows the, uh, the proposed driveway extension. The granite apron in front of the proposed three car garage. A small week kind of wheel run area on the right. And modifying the existing walkway with a slightly different walkway pattern to access the new site entry. And, uh, if it's okay, I'm just gonna dive into the architectural drawings and we can come back to site.
Can you go back to the original plan?
Yes.
Current conditions? Um, in, in dealing with this addition, are you, um, impacting any exposed ledge? I'm looking at what's there.
Potential, yes, there is some ledge where the addition will be right here. That may be impacted.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's correct. That question was asked by conservation as well, and there's, yeah, that's, that small ledge outcrop will be hammered to be removed. And then also with the walkway.
That requires a different permit from this board.
Um, yeah, so my, yeah, and again, I may be wrong, but my understanding that houses and garages were exempt from that permit, but I may be wrong.
Yeah, that was my understanding as well as the projects that also required either, um, um, a stormwater permit or building permit did not also require ledge removal. Uh, permit.
All right.
But we can, we can verify that with the building inspector. We'll come back if, uh, if we're mistaken on that.
Could be one of those. Falls we put in. I think if this was completely new. Construction, you know, we were. To develop a.
Um, your, your voice is.
I'm sorry, that if we were doing completely new construction to develop a brand new house on this lot, I might agree that you got some exemption to excavate for that, but, uh. You know, this, this is, uh, this is a, uh. What's the word I'm using for, uh, looking for? This isn't, uh, a necessity. You have a garage and this is something new where you're removing ledge to. Expand an existing structure. I think our bylaws is gonna apply, but. We'll get back to you on that, but that, that'll need a special permit if it does apply. We, we, you know, we dealt with, I'll give you an example, the house across from the art club, uh, the Akbers Row House, it's being remodeled, but, you know. There was visible ledge on the site being altered by that, and they had to go through that permitting process.
But my understanding was it was a pool house structure, an accessory structure, and the pool that was impacting it, and those. Those do have to go through that review.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll look at it, but I'm just, that's why I asked the question, so we'll look at it.
Okay, I'm just gonna go into the architecturals briefly and we can come back to the, uh, the site plan. Again, the existing house does have a total res- residential gross floor area of over five thousand square feet, five thousand one hundred and sixteen. Um, existing house elevations as it exists now, here's the, uh, the side that's facing where the garage will be attached. The right side, uh, rear of the existing house and then the, uh, the, the, the left side. And existing, uh, attached garage and the, the mudroom expansion, so we are including, uh, the new square footage here in the mudroom. As finished and conditioned space and then the space over the. Proposed garage, even though it's detached from the existing second floor, it is a connected structure, so we are including that square footage as part of the proposed square footage. Uh, which is increasing the total from five thousand one sixteen to, um, six thousand four hundred and seventy-two square feet. Here are the proposed elevations of, of the garage. Okay, so it's a three bay garage with a sloped, a gable roof line with flares and deep overhangs. That complements some of the existing architectural language of the house with the shingles and the materials. But also adding a little bit of a new character with slightly more shadow lines or slightly more three dimensional details. Um, to help give it a little more definition. Here's the side view from the front courtyard of the house, looking to the side of the mudroom edition and the garage beyond. Uh, so the same theme, uh, continues. Uh, we do have a lighting plan superimposed with the floor plan, so the, the light fixtures are keyed in. Uh, so we're proposing sconce lights, uh, in between the garage doors. Sconce lights around the entry and then recess lights around the porch, and those are the only new lighting that's being proposed. So that, that's essentially the architectural, um, component of the project, and I'm happy to, um. Answer any questions here or go back to the site or landscape plan.
John, what's the overall height?
Yeah.
Uh, the overall height is to the peak, just to be consistent for measuring, uh, to the peak, it's thirty point six and to the midpoint. Following the existing definition is twenty-two five.
Okay.
Midpoint of the, of the main roof.
And the percentage that you're increasing the, the square footage, is it twenty percent or?
Uh, I've got it about twenty-six point, twenty-six percent.
Okay, thank you.
John, when you speak to that increase in the square footage, uh, are you including the existing garage in the before or?
Yeah, we, uh, we actually did not include the existing garage. Uh, we only include the finished and conditioned areas.
So it would be a smaller percentage increase if the existing garage counted, correct?
Correct, if you counted it as, as a finished structure, correct.
I have a question, Amy Glassmeyer. Um, could you talk about the base elevation? Upon, uh, off of which you're describing the height of the structure. Where this house has multiple levels, so where are you actually starting the? Structure then to be measured as the height of the building?
Um, sure. Uh, so we. In calculating the average grade, we took the grading around the proposed garage foundation. So starting from where the proposed addition would attach to the main house and going all the way around. To, to the other side, and we took the average of those grades.
So.
To measure from.
I- is the garage going to be, um, lower than the existing residential structure? I- is the garage going to be, um, lower than the existing residential structure?
Uh, height-wise?
No, in terms of, there's various ways that we can measure this. I'm interested in where, what you call the base elevation, and then what will be the final roof elevation and the extent to which there's a, a margin that is being placed in conjunction with the garage relative to the residential structure. You can dig out and lower, you can lower the base elevation, and then you can build up higher. So I'm interested in, if you started at the original level, and then you added the structure on top of it, what would be the, um, finished height?
I see. So the way we determine the, the slab level was based on the grade that is closest to the existing grays in front of the the garage, so that determined where the slab height should be. And then we work backwards from that, from the slab height with the required ceiling height for the garage. And that kind of determined additively the, the height of the structure and also balancing it with the existing peak heights and making sure we don't go higher than the peak of the existing house. Uh, and then the net result of that with an analysis of the existing grades around the addition and the average of those grades around this perimeter is what we determined as our baseline to measure from. And, um, so that's, that's kind of the, the methodology we followed.
So would you say that the residences around the renovation will see no visible difference in the height of the structure once it's completed?
Uh, between the exist, compared to the existing garage or the existing house?
I mean, overall, will the context be visually different? Will people that are two hundred feet down the road look and say, oh, that house is much bigger now than it was before? Or ha- is it actually complementary to and consistent with what is already in place?
Um, we would argue that it's complementary, and there's also the fact that the existing garage almost acts as a as a gatehouse because it's so close to the street, so when you're driving by this tight street and you see the structure, you can't really see what's behind it. In fact, people can't find the front door to this house, which is one of the current issues, because this building is such an obstacle, so by taking that away and attaching the new garage to the house and having a small covered entry, that in a way solves that issue. And we would argue that architecturally, the, the proposed structure does not dominate the, the existing house, and uh, I think I showed you the, kind of the complete elevation of the, uh, the front. The house has varying roof lines and some, some elements that are arguably more dominant, um. So I don't think, especially from the back, and this garage won't be seen from the back, really. Um, and from the front, it solves that issue of the kind of the gatehouse obstacle that exists today. So, so we would argue that it's compatible with the scale, and it doesn't dominate it, and it, it makes the front of the house more open and friendlier and safer to get in and out from, and then the back of the house, you really see this behind the existing master bedroom wing. Uh, so it, it, we, we would argue that it wouldn't be that visible from the rear of the house if somebody's looking at this from the other side of the loop road.
So if I'm looking at the, at this sandy beach side of things, I wouldn't feel a sense of increasing magnitude?
Uh, correct, because it would be on the, away from the water side. It would be right here where my cursor is.
Okay.
And the grade kind of drops as well, so from here, from the water, this would not be a visible building. It's, it would be most visible as you're driving on this loop road. But right now, there is a building that's even more visible, because it's right up against that loop road.
Okay, my second question is about lighting, which is that we do hope that, um, the, the most important, um, aesthetic features of town is the access to water and the our, our sort of inlets and our, and our harbor, and what will impede the beauty of it, no doubt, would be lights which are used for illumination and access to the water, but though they would essentially overpower any structure is, if you're looking up at it, right, it'll, it'll sort of shine down on the, the harbor. So have you made accommodations for lighting that is really effective for people to mo- get around the landscape, but at the same time, um, be completely subtle?
Uh, we think that the chosen sconce fixtures and these two fixtures are really the only two that will probably be visible from the from the, um, the ocean side, if I go back to that context plan. They will be facing this side, and then they'll be behind, obviously, all of the tree growth and the houses that align the water, so they'd be I don't think from the harbor, they really be visible at all, but even then, they're essentially fairly modest, um, sconce-type fixtures with low wattage lighting. Uh, so we think that the lighting proposed is, is fairly subtle and, and minimal. And that's same for the front of the garage as well.
So you're working within the bounds of what we would think everybody in the neighborhood, as well as our, uh, articulated regulations, they're not regulations, really, they're just requests, um, that the proposal that you're making will, in fact, be reflective of our intent.
Um, I, I think we would definitely agree with that, and you know, it's hard to control lighting, obviously, because people do uplights and spotlights and all kinds of bloodlights, which are hard. And none of that is being proposed here.
All right, thank you.
All right, anybody else from the board? We've kind of gone out of order. I'll start with Kevin.
Yeah, uh, quick, quick comment. Um, in terms of the, the base grade elevation, typically, um, instead of just the elevations within, uh, ten feet of the addition, y- y- since since the addition is being added to an existing house, we would expect, um, the average grade to be within ten feet of the house and the addition, not, not just the addition. Um, and I don't know how that changes the, the, the average grade to midpoint of rafter. Um, uh, elevation, but with the caveat that you're building no higher than what's existing with your, with your main roof for the addition. Um, do you have a, uh, does Jeff have a, I don't know who did the calculation for the, for the base grade? If you did a ten-foot offset uh, for the grade within the entire house, um, how much higher would that be? And with your, I can't see your, your elevation to the midpoint of rafter uh, from what you've calculated base grade, but it looks like it's twenty, yeah, twenty-two feet.
Right.
So unless it's thirteen feet average more, you're not even close to exceeding the height requirement that, as we currently have.
Right, I'm, we're pretty confident that we would still within, stay within the height requirement, but the baseline, uh, indicator may change, and that's, that's a good point, yeah, that's a good.
That's fine, I, I mean, just in terms of doing the, doing the calculation, w- we have a, a, a potential change coming in the, um, on Monday with uh, bylaw height definition. Uh, but the current one's still in play. Um, but I wo- I would make the point that it's no higher, that the main roof is no higher than what's existing, um, and um, to the extent that the calculation is based on the average grade around an addition, I think it, it's irrelevant to our large home review. Did I just go full circle on this?
No, I think that makes sense. I mean, I think if it was higher.
Discussing.
Existing house, you're right.
I still think it's not relevant.
Yep.
All right. Anybody else from the board have anything?
And my general comments are, it's a good, um, um, massing study, um, attaching this to um, the existing structure. Looks like it might open up some view to the neighbor to the, I want to say, west. West side, it might improve their view. It certainly won't, won't impact it. Um, I don't see anything in the context, um, that, that this change would do anything but improve, uh, for the neighbors.
Anybody else in the board have questions for John Teriyaki? All right, uh, Jeff, Jeff, were you gonna, I'm sorry, Deirdre, go ahead.
No, I was saying, because you can't see me, I said, no, I have no other questions.
Yeah. Um, is, Jeff, are you gonna present something to us as well about the site plan, or?
Um, yeah, I'm here. Um, I, I think John touched on most, most of the site plan, but essentially you have a a detached garage, uh, which is be, going to be demolished and reconstructed as an attached garage. Uh, the one thing to note on that is that I, I think it kind of opens up some space in that area in a way, because right now the garage is very close to that driveway, and there's not really enough room to park a car comfortably. So it's gonna open up the driveway. Um, as far as, um, Sean Pappich prepared the landscaping and the hard, hardscape design. Uh, but we're going with a, a porous asphalt for the driveway. Um, the parking area next to the garage will be crushed stone, so another pervious surface, and then a, a pervious walkway, and we've detailed those pervious surfaces on the site plan with, with, uh, construction details. Um, so the project is also subject to a stormwater permit, and that permit has been issued by Conservation.
Do you guys go to zoning?
No, we didn't.
I thought that. Don't have it in front of you, but I looked at this before. I thought you had some non-conformities with setbacks like with the previous project.
The, the existing garage is non-conforming, but the proposed, uh, is, the addition is brought into, into conformance.
Okay. All right, uh, anybody from the board have any questions, or Jeff, or? Otherwise, um, I will entertain a motion to what you'd like to do here. I don't know if there's additional information you want for another meeting, or ready to proceed to a motion to close this and issue a permit.
I'll make a motion to approve without conditions.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, to roll call vote, uh, starting with Clark.
Clark Brewer, I.
Tom Callahan, I.
Glassmeyer, I.
Deirdre Hobbs, and I.
Chris Black, I.
All right, well, everyone, thank you. Good luck with your project, Mr. and Mrs. Natus.
Good luck.
Thank you so much for your time and your review of our project.
All right.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right. Uh, members of the board, you found out that our minutes to approve are from November sixth nineteen, uh, twenty twenty-two, so I have a motion to approve. Motion to approve those minutes, so I'll second it, uh, all in favor.
I, I.
Uh, Tom Callahan, I, everybody's an I.
Glassmeyer, uh, the squirrel's got it, right?
Yeah, okay.
I went to a, a, a Mass Architectural Access Board meeting, and the chairman said, um, anyone who is opposed to this, say so. If hearing none, no opposition, then it, then it carries forward, which is a way to save ten seconds, maybe. For vote.
I don't know how, I don't know how Robert's rules borders work, but.
Recommendation is absolutely spot on.
Yeah, yeah, uh, well, it's an interesting way to approach it. We'll, we'll try it next year, it is. All right, so told you about town meeting, anything else that anybody has? No, all right, then, um, our next meeting is going to be May tenth, is that correct?
Correct, May tenth and thirty-first.
May tenth and thirty-first, so it's after, uh, Memorial Day. Um, all right, so I'll, it's time to motion to adjourn. We got through that a lot quicker than I thought. All right.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Well, wait a minute. Is anybody opposed?
Trying to save seven seconds, Tom.
Yes, try it, Tom, try.
Is it anybody opposed?
Seven seconds.
Adjourn, no, all right, then we're adjourned, thank you all.
Bye, thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.
See you all on Monday.
Bye, thank you, Lauren.
Bye, Lauren.
Lauren, thank you.
Thank you, good night.